Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
You could please remain standing. All of you know that the Feinstein Foundation has donated hundreds of thousands, if not more, dollars to the Attleboro Public Schools. And on September 7th, their founder, Alan Shawn Feinstein, passed away, so please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Attleboro School Committee for Monday, September 16th. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. The first item on the agenda is an introduction of our 2024-2025 student representatives. And for that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sawyer to begin.
Oh. I think I would like to invite up Ms. Campbell.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to formally.
Well played.
Thank you, Chairman Menendez. Thank you, everyone. It's very exciting. We have three students that you will see throughout the season. Tonight, we have Casper Lennox. He will be joining us pretty much at every meeting. He is our Student Council President as well. He has already done a good amount of work about planning things, opportunities for our students here at Attleboro High School. And it's exciting for what he will be sharing with us throughout the season. Carla Deveraux, who is now a senior, she is playing volleyball and spiking it away for the team. That team is amazing, so she is not with us tonight, but she will be alternating with Zuri Ferguson. So Zuri Ferguson will be joining us for most of the fall before some really busy swim season comes into play. But I think that there are some other people who wanted to also acknowledge Zuri, not only for her, what she brings to our school community, but really what she, the recognition that she has brought to the city and just how she has made us all so proud and connected to her journey this past summer at the Paris Olympics.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, and congratulations to both of you. Welcome, well, welcome, Casper, and welcome back, Zuri. With that, I'd actually, before we move on to the superintendent's report, I'd like to invite Mayor DeSimone up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Chair. Guys, good evening, School Committee. Good evening, Superintendent Sawyer, Attleboro staff and administrators. Hello, Zuri. Did you get my letter?
Yes.
All right, well, I'm about to follow it up. So first of all, thank you for inviting me and letting me participate in this really, really cool thing that you did and for which you deserve a lot of respect and recognition. So I'm here, Zuri, on behalf of the City of Attleboro. Could I ask Zuri to come over, Rob?
Yeah, absolutely.
Come on over. So I'm here, of course, representing the City of Attleboro, and I'd like to extend to you the following certificate, all right?
Thank you.
Okay, Zuri. So I present the certificate of recognition from the City of Attleboro to Zuri Ferguson. Whereas Attleboro High School student Zuri Ferguson participated in the 2024 Paris Olympics, and whereas Zuri is now a member of a very elite group of athletes who will forever be known, how cool is that, as Olympians, and whereas the level of discipline, commitment, and focus required to compete at the Olympic level is both remarkable and admirable, and whereas it is important to acknowledge the love and support of Zuri's family, friends, teachers, coaches, teammates, and to all who guided, motivated, and encouraged her in her Olympic journey, and whereas the City of Attleboro is extremely proud of you, Zuri, and of your amazing Olympic experience. Wish I could have been there. Now, therefore, I, Kathleen DeSimone, Mayor of the City of Attleboro, hereby proudly acknowledge and honor our Olympian, Zuri Ferguson, and extend the utmost appreciation and admiration for your accomplishments and wish you much continued success and happiness in your senior year of high school and throughout your life, Zuri. Very, very well done. Absolutely amazing and astounding.
Thank you.
Good job.
And, Zuri, before you sit down, as a microcosm, a mini version of the city, we would also like to present you with a certificate that says, "The Attleboro School Committee recognizes Zuri Ferguson for her accomplishments in representing the Attleboro Public Schools and demonstrating blue pride on an international stage at the 2024 Olympic Games in Paris, France." Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor DeSimone. So next on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman. As it is our custom, this evening, we'll be giving you a full briefing on both what we accomplished this summer and the work that went into the start of school and how things have gone so far. You know, once upon a time, this report was a perilous moment for the administration because we had a lot of things to work through, and the openings of schools for a period there did not go quite as swimmingly as we thought they should. And while there will always be issues to work through on the start of school, and I think I should just take a moment to just remind everybody that while we don't really, I mean, everyone knows that, you know, there's summer break in American education. The result of that is that the organization that I have the honor to lead is really a seasonal one. And it's unlike, it's not like, you know, people compare superintendents to CEOs sometimes, and while, you know, that comparison is sometimes apt, running a school district sometimes, especially when we talk about the seasonal aspect of it, is more like running a camp than it is running a business, right? At the end of the season, we have to board up the cabins, put away the canoes, and, you know, get, you know, lock the place up, and then get it clean and ready for the next season and start the whole thing fresh over again. And with 900 employees and 6,000 kids coming, it is a daunting task to get this place ready in the short amount of time we have, to be ready to receive the kids and to be ready to hit the ground running and have everything work the way it should right out of the gate. And so there's always going to be a challenge involved in that, and there's always going to be some blips. But, you know, I think the staff, district-wide certainly, and our maintenance staff, custodial staff, central office staff, a lot of really hard work goes into giving us the best chance to get off, to get the school year off to a strong start, because we only get one chance to do that. And first impressions make, you know, make all the difference. And so we're very proud of the work that we do and what we're able to accomplish in getting the school year off to a strong start, which, again, we think we did this year. That said, there are always things to work on, some things that need some attention. I know that Mr. Vitale was certainly going to talk about transportation as part of his report, and I just wanted to say that, again, we talk about this every year, we make a decision as a community to err on the side of flexibility in terms of when people register for transportation. If we wanted the buses to be hard-scheduled and everyone to know exactly how things were going to work and have it be as precise as possible on the first day, we would need to not accept late registrations much earlier in the summer than we do. And many years ago, the decision was made that the impact of that, having so many hundreds of people have to wait for the start of school to get their transportation in line, wasn't something that we wanted to do. And the result of that is that by taking late registrations into effect as late as we do, that makes things work out the way that they do. And some of the complaints that we sometimes get are a direct result of how we choose to operate. Now, I'm not saying that our priorities are wrong on that front, but I think that this year, especially with, and one of the things that Mr. Palmer's going to talk about is our enrollment, with increased enrollment, I think what we're seeing in transportation is that we're hitting a tipping point in terms of the strain of how many kids that we need to transport and how the impact of late registrations are affecting transportation. And so right now, the focus is getting this year resolved and up and running, get everybody on a bus and everywhere they need to be. But when the dust has cleared on that, I will be asking Mr. Vitale to engage the committee in a conversation about whether it's time to rethink some of the practices that have been historically working for us, that given how things operate now in 2024, perhaps we need to rethink. Because if we want a particularly different outcome than the one that we're experiencing now, we're going to have to change some fundamental ways that we do business. It's not really just about like, we need to do better, which we always can do better, there's always room for improvement. But I think there are some structural decisions that, again, we've been operating on for some time, that we need to think about whether or not they still service as well as they once did, if we want to get to a particularly different place on what the first month of transportation is like. Because, quite frankly, the way we set ourselves up to do business results in the way this first month is, and it's certainly hard on the transportation office, and it's, I know hard on some families, and I think it could be much, much worse if we were not doing it the way we were doing it. But perhaps it's time to rethink how we might handle the whole thing to get us in a completely different position. So I think that that's a thing that we should look at further in the year, so for planning for next year. So that's one of the takeaways that I've had from this opening. And again, Mr. Vitale will get into some of the details. Another thing I just wanted to give a quick update on is we're implementing the new cell phone policy this year. You know, certainly, I think that there are people who feel on both sides of the policy, whether they like it, think it's a great idea, or some people have some concerns about it. I only received a handful of people reaching out to me, and again, it was pretty balanced in terms of what kind of message I was getting. The principals report that at the classroom level in the schools, it's going well. So, you know, whatever concerns the adults have in our attempt to do this, so far, the students are complying. I think kids, and I can't, you know, I'm generalizing here, but I think generally people get what this is about and why we need to do this. And while, you know, we can always debate whether or not there are better ways to handle the particulars, there seems to be general buy-in to the idea that we need to do something. And I do think that some people appreciate that when you look at what other districts are doing, our middle-of-the-path kind of approach is appreciated, and so I think there's a buy-in to want to make that work. Because if this doesn't work, then it's not like we're going to give up on trying to do something about phones. That'll only instigate us doing something a little bit more draconian. And so I think people, there's a lot of people who want to make this work the way that we're approaching it, and so far, it's gone well. So, you know, it's early, and, you know, with the progressive discipline baked into the student handbooks, you know, it's going to take us a while to get to where the first couple, you know, steps that you have to go through before we're talking about confiscating phones, you know, we're not at that point yet, so we haven't had that really going on. So maybe when we get there, I'll have a different report. But so far, so good. I wanted to let the committee know that that seems to be going well so far.
Any questions, cell phone policy related?
Thank you. Then the final thing I just wanted to comment on this evening, and it's related to cell phones, you know, we had another tragedy, a school shooting in Georgia at the very start of school. Seems like we can't even, you know, get a year off without having another one. I know that some people saw that as a reason to be concerned about our cell phone policy. And so two things. One, I just wanted to make again the point that, you know, we need to create a safe environment, and we, you know, the safety planning that we do as a district, the work that we do with APD, the money the city has invested in the schools for safety, I mean, we have the gunshot detection system, that was a very large ticket price, and, you know, that was city money that made that possible and ensures that, God forbid, something ever happened, the police will be here quickly, right? And that's, in all the research we've done, that's the most important thing we can do. So that's a big one. But, you know, we're also in the process of upgrading the cameras all across the district, right? Another huge investment by the city. So I want to really just say, you know, we're doing a lot, the city is being very supportive of that, and, you know, the schools, I think, both in terms of their planning and the technology that we're using, are very safe places. Part of what makes a school safe is that we don't want to feed into the anxiety around school safety. So as a district, we really go, do our best to not flame the fans of fear caused by incidences. And I think some people sometimes are concerned about whether or not we're like paying attention or like even noticed that happened. And I just want to say that it's intentional that we do not make a big deal out of these things, that we try to create a sense of normalcy and that this is a safe place and that, you know, you should feel safe in schools. And we don't think that overreacting to things that happen, you know, helped to create that kind of an environment. So, you know, we are certainly saddened by what happened, but we feel like not overemphasizing these threats is part of how we make this a place where students can feel safe and that we can stay focused on learning. And to tie this back to cell phones, I do know there is a concern about how the policy impacts parents' ability to contact students when there's an emergency. And I know this is a tough message, but I feel like I have a responsibility to say that if we're really concerned about school, student safety, the cell phones are a threat to safety in, if there were ever an emergency, right? The rush of calls that would be caused by that would actually interfere with the police's ability to respond. It also will cause confusion if students think that they should do what their parents or whoever they're on the phone with is telling them to do, rather than what the officials are telling them to do. So for all these reasons, it's counterintuitive to some people, but in the name of safety, in the case of an emergency, the phones are actually a threat to our ability to keep kids safe. And so while, you know, that, we're not doing anything in particular about that, I do know that there have been some concerns about how the cell phone policy gets in the way of people's ability to contact their kids directly, and I just wanted to reiterate that that's not actually a bad thing.
And I think it's, I think it's worth reiterating the partnership with the police, because anytime there is any sort of concern around safety with the schools, the police are immediately contacted by the administration or the building administration, and the situation is investigated. We had a lengthy discussion at our August 12th meeting about the incident at Koala over the summer. And I think, again, it's worth reiterating how quickly the police responded to an empty school building and remembering how much training our officers have gone through for those types of situations. So we are very grateful for that relationship with the, with the police department and with, for the support from the city on those security upgrades. So thank you for that. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Thank you. That concludes my portion of tonight's report, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Regan.
So in preparation for our opening this year, our students and our staff engaged in several learning opportunities. First and foremost, we had almost over 300 students in six programs that we ran this summer, in addition to the ESY program that Ms. Maderos will be speaking about. We had our JumpStar program, which welcomed incoming kindergarten students, our Title One Reading and Writing Program, which was developed for incoming students in grades one through four, our English learner program for students in grades one through 11, our middle school project-based learning program for students in grades six through eight, our transition to high school program, which was for incoming grade nine students, and our credit recovery program, which was for high school students. So we were quite busy in all of the buildings this summer for students, families, and staff. All reports say that they enjoyed the opportunity to come together and collaborate and learn with each other. It was just enough time to take a little break from when school ended, join us for most of July, and then have another break before school started. In terms of professional development for teachers, our coordinators, and administrators, they attended several sessions. So our grades five through seven social studies teachers attended an investigating history professional development with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the 1-8 Foundation. Our Learning Acceleration Network team, myself and a couple other folks collaborated with our Leadership Acceleration Network, or LAN, our consultant, and so you'll be hearing that word often, and if you hear me say LAN, that's what I'm referring to. So we met several times over the summer, and we're able to really focus in on our target areas, which is high-quality instruction and high expectations. The administration from all levels attended a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education session with myself and some members, some coordinators as well. It was with the intent of looking very closely at instructional leadership strategies to support instruction in the classroom and using high-quality materials and high-quality instruction. Our principals, assistant principals, and teachers also attended a Data Linkit training this summer. Linkit is a data dashboard that we have where we can take a close look at how our students are performing on local assessments as well as standardized assessments like the MCAS. Our district leadership team, and I know we've mentioned this earlier in the year, started their Leadership Academy, which was on August 5th. Our focus, again, was on educational leadership and high-quality instruction. To start off the year, on August 29th, there were 50 professional development sessions offered to all of our staff throughout the district. And also this year for professional development, this is the second phase of our cycle of Portrait of a Graduate. So the teachers will be doing their independent action research projects focused on Portrait of a Graduate. So within that two-year cycle, we have one year where we take the time to learn about a particular topic, and then in the second year, that topic is then integrated into independent action research projects in their classrooms. So that's where we are this year. And finally, in our schools, I was able to visit one school today, there's a lot of classroom routines, building routines still being put into place. Our students are completing all of their benchmark and baseline assessments, and we're starting to transition into all the content area learning so far. So we had quite a busy summer in terms of our students attending schools, programming, and our staff attending a lot of summer professional development as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Palmer.
Hello, everybody. I know enrollment's been a topic of conversation recently, and it typically is. So why don't we, I'll start with overall enrollment. Welcome Center's been very busy, as you can imagine, throughout the summer. We were particularly between July 1st and opening, we had a significant number of families registered just throughout that time, upwards of 300. So like, that was a, that was an unusual number for just that short of a time. But what I can tell you is that comparing this year and last year at this time, we're up 177 students across the district. So last year at this time, we were at 6,067. At this time, we're at 6,244, which that number changed three times during the day today. So I had to update it a couple of times. And we also have 46 students in progress. Those are moving along. Not all of those 46 will probably move through because we are paying very close attention to a lot of different details. We've also made some upgrades in our process, namely some of the forms that we use in order to, you know, get the information that we need, such as caregiver affidavits, living with a district relative, in lieu of lease. We've updated all of those forms to include some, the policies, Massachusetts law, and also to put on some acknowledgements of, you know, the, you know, what you're agreeing to when you agree to, you know, say that you have somebody living with, with you. With that, we've also created a system just to be able to keep an eye on those, you know, our families and be able to, you know, reach out to them and make sure that we have families getting what they need, but also living within the district. It's been a, a, a big shift for us because we're also asking more questions and providing some housing questions when we are receiving certain pieces of paperwork in. It's partially to make sure, it really is driven by wanting to make sure that if it's a Mecanvento student, that we're actually getting that information sooner rather than later, too. That's important for us to be able to connect families to resources. But it also kind of gives us a better picture of what's actually going on and if there are other supports that we need to be providing this family from the start in order to make a better year for them, but also for their kids to be able to access school and be able to participate in school. So we've, last, this year, we had about 837 people submit for enrollment. Of that 837, 675 were actually moved through. 113, they, they stopped submission. That's partially because they've either changed their mind, they've gone somewhere else, or they're, when we explained some of our processes, they understood that this wasn't probably the place, the right place for them to be registering. We've, again, we have about 46 out there. Those numbers aren't that significantly different from last year, but over the last couple of years, you can see a trend. Right now, over the past year, we've had about 219 students withdraw for a variety of different reasons, so that kind of offsets some of those numbers as well. We have, of the 46 people in queue as well, all have been notified of what they do need because we do want kids in school, and seven don't have any documents at all, so we're, you know, that's why I say some people probably, of that 46, probably won't move through for whatever decisions have come about in their life. Again, we've made a significant amount of improvements just in how we're, we're engaging our families coming in and being able to have really good conversations with families. That's been a huge help on a variety of corners and avenues for us to be able to help them. We're also making sure that anybody who is using a caregiver affidavit, that we're giving them a call, really talking through the situation, so if they've dropped that off, we're still making a phone call. They have someone that they're actually talking to every time. And the updated documents, like I said, do reflect the district policies and Mass laws very clearly now, which they, they kind, they did, but they had been, they were kind of, you know, dated, and we want people to take them seriously, and we want them to understand that this is an important process. We also have just now Who's Notary Republic up front, which is convenient for a lot of our families. They don't have to try to go find one, just can do the work right there, and it has helped us become more efficient. As for residency, we'll be beginning the fifth grade and ninth grade residency reviews come October. We do wait a little while, only because there's too much to do at the beginning of the year, it's just too many things to take on at once. We'll be sending instructions out to families, but also our clerks, because we do have a lot of new clerks who need to just understand how that process works, it'll be a workflow. And we've already had eight residency investigations since July 1st, so we are, again, paying attention. I know that's a topic that has come up before, and people have wondered if we do pay, we pay very close attention to residency. Been very vigilant for their families coming in as well. So, and we're very uniform in what you'll be asked, like when you come in, just so that we are making sure that we are fair to everybody coming through the door. As you may know, the Attleboro Behavior Team is fully functioning now. They are working on the elementary and the middle school level. We have two behavior specialists and three behavior paras that work with our specialists. It has been, last year was quite successful. We had 43 cases last year that they were involved with. Thirteen of those have been closed because those students have moved on and not needed their support anymore. Twelve have continued into this, 13 have continued into this year, and then there have been some that have kind of either faded or just, they just needed a quick consult rather than needing a full behavior plan, or it was guidance to teachers or administration on how to help the students. They were very busy, though, in all eight schools, and I was very impressed with their work. They were well, they, I feel that they were well-received. The feedback I've received has been very positive. The team is a strong team, they work well together, and they all are very comfortable walking into, you know, sometimes some difficult situations and, you know, being able to manage the problem at hand, which I appreciate, and they do so in a professional way and make sure that everybody feels like they're supported. As you know, Dr. McDonald has been around for a bit, and he has been very involved with that, and he'll be working with Abacus as well. So there's a lot of work that we're doing across the board in order to help all of our schools to feel a little bit more valid, like, just to have a good person to talk to about, you know, a difficult situation. Attendance, we, we have made improvements across the board as well. We, where I was very happy with what we were seeing. We're seeing us heading back down to where we were pre-COVID, but we still have work to do. Right now, the average, if we were to average out across the district, would be about seven absences. Right now, the average, if we were to average out across the district, would be about seven absences per student. But that, you know, that's the average. There are some who are, you know, kids that we really need to work with, but most of those kids have already, and those families have already been reached out to by this, before we opened. So that they were aware that we were paying attention and that we really need kids in school. I have to commend every administrator and every teacher and everyone who, every support staff who would all, you know, they're really all-in on this. And this is a lot of work in order to communicate with all these families. And they do it every day, and I'm really, really proud of the work that they're doing because they, it's showing in the results. And if we keep the trend going, we'll be in really good shape in the next couple, over the next couple of years. As for resources, the Welcome Center continues to keep everybody connected. If you look at our, the Welcome Center page, there is a community resource guide that's updated regularly. We also added a suicide awareness page specifically for that. So there's, you know, not a lot of looking around to do for that. You can click right, get right to it. And William &amp; James has continued to be a benefit to our schools. I do receive a lot of good feedback as well regarding any phone calls that have been made to them, the turnaround time, and the ability to get parents connected or families connected. What we are seeing is that there is going to be a group of people who are going to need that a couple of times before they're really ready to take on the help, but that they've been willing to make the call is step one. And the fact that Interface does the follow-up is a huge benefit for our teams. That is the hardest work to maintain and keep on top of, and they do it well professionally for the families.
Before you pass it along, just because that was a lot of information, I want to see it. Before you play hot potato over there. Any questions or comments for Ms. Palmer? I have a couple, but.
I just said one. Well, it's kind of a two-parter, and I don't know if you have the numbers, and we can take it offline if you don't. You had mentioned that we went from roughly about 6,076 kids, I think, to 6244. So about 177, 178 increase. I'm just curious, what, do we have what the high school enrollment is this year currently? And also the incoming kindergarten class?
Yes. So currently, the high school enrollment is 2,037 as of today. And we have 462K students registered.
Thank you.
So my questions, I think you made it pretty clear, but the 46 in process, that's not included in the 177. So we're looking at probably landing around 200 to 210 general students when all is said and done with those 46?
Well, we're at 6,244 right now, so we'll be a little upwards of 250, I'm sure. 6,250 students before we're done. And again, it depends, because some of these folks have been there for a little bit, so they might. We try to give them as much time as possible to hand in what they need to hand in. And then eventually, we just will send it back to them and take it off of our roster.
Perfect, thank you.
We can't reach them.
And then the, the other question I had was, I was glad to hear the addition of the suicide awareness page on the Resource Center website. That's, I just want to clarify, that's not just for those considering self-harm, that's for anyone that wants to reach out on behalf of someone else, correct?
Yes, yeah, we purposely named it Awareness rather than, because there are times when I want people to feel comfortable going there for any reason. Whatever information that you might need, it has everything there.
Any other, Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. On the W, on the William James thing, do you have any statistics? I know we just started doing it like in April or something.
Yeah, I can send you their report. I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but we, they, in the, the short time that we had them, by the time we received the report, it averaged about 10 families per month were reaching out to them, which is pretty good, like that, that's a good, that's a good. Now, did all of them accept services? No, but again, sometimes it's not the first time, and we, what we want is to begin that process of, you know, making it comfortable to be able to call. And of them, some of them did say that they would probably call back if they needed it. And some of them, too, were families who, they might have been connected for their child and will need more. You know, and that, the hope is that the whole family will, you know, take part in.
So it's open-ended like that. If you call just because you're having one particular issue and other things come up, they'll entertain that, too.
And your intake with the actual, your assigned clinician, it's a much more significant intake than the initial one. And that one will kind of, their job is to kind of delve a little bit deeper and to figure out what you really need. Because sometimes, you know, you don't know what you need until you have a conversation.
Thank you. That seems like a good response for a new program. So I'm interested in seeing how those numbers play out over the course of the year.
I was, I was actually pleased, at first, I was like, oh, only, but then I realized the amount of time wasn't, it wasn't extended period of time, so it was, I was pleased with it. And I know that part of what we need to do is really push out the information.
Right.
Once again, and make it incredibly, make it a normal thing to hear about, oh, yeah, Call Interface.
Right.
You know, that's the work that we need to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Palmer? All right, thank you. Good luck.
Good evening, Chairman Getty, school committee members. So summer is always the busiest time for human resources and hiring. This year was no different. We hired a total of 79 individuals to start the school year. The number of retirements and resignations are still in line with what they've been in the past several years. We had 25 retirements, excuse me, and 35 resignations over this past, for this school year. Saying that, this year saw the lowest teacher vacancy rate at the start of the school year since I've been here in 2016. We only had two teacher vacancies at the high school in world language, which is an extremely challenging subject to hire for. And so we have since filled one of those, and we are still currently looking for one more. But I attribute our, our success to filling vacancies to two things. One, the consistency in our building administration has allowed for them to really execute the hiring practices and protocols that we have developed over the last several years. The consistency of those same individuals hiring creates a better hire, and so that's one. The second is the restructuring of the HR office and the team members' responsibilities within the HR office. We used to just have Kathy Black hiring everybody. So you can imagine one person trying to hire, you know, roughly 80 people is a challenge in several months. And so we've now added Lynn Gale as also hiring. And so Kathy is responsible for hiring all AEA and administrators, and Lynn is responsible for hiring all others. So paras, clerks, anyone who is a non-AEA or administrator. And so having two people really helped, I think, to make sure that we had the staffing that we, that we had hired in place for the start of the school year. As I mentioned, we had the two vacancies at the high school. We currently have a little over 900 regular employees. If you add in athletic coaches and substitutes, we have over 1,100 people that we are still responsible for doing tracking and following. Again, 79 total staff, 45 teachers and 35 others, or 34 others over the school year. We still have 16 vacant positions, as I mentioned, the one world language position at the high school. The remainder of the positions are paraprofessional positions scattered through the elementary and middle school. The high school is fully staffed with paraprofessionals. One of the, two of the other things that we did this year for enhancing the employee experience, we have created a new employee orientation. And so teachers did get their new teacher orientation every year, but we have expanded that to all employees having orientation. So setting the culture, the mission and vision, the expectation for employees, going through roles and responsibilities, and just making sure they're set up in the platforms that we use, as well as going through some safety items, has been, I think, a good enhancement to their experience when they're newly onboarded. And then we also created an HR newsletter that we sent out to staff. We just sent our first edition last week. And so hoping to just get information out there on a monthly, every other month basis, just to keep people connected. One of our goals this year is to increase our utilization of employee assistance, EAP. They offer numerous things to employees that we need to really get out there and, and increase our utilization of. And so that's been a focus with our administration, getting our administrators to understand all the things that are offered so that they can then pass along to staff, as well as setting up just repeat information being sent out continuously throughout the year so that we can offer support, again, a way to offer support to our staff. The other thing moving forward for this year, the HR council is developing guidelines for professional attire for our staff. And so that's something that we're going to be focusing on throughout this school year. So there's a lot of exciting things. We've accomplished a lot, but a lot of exciting things coming this year, so I look forward to getting some knowledge.
Awesome. Any questions for Ms. Singer related to human resources? All right, thank you.
Long to have on. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. I'm going to start with extended school year. I already said there were 300. We had 300 alone, an additional 300 in special education here in district. We run two, we run it out of two sites. Our grades five through 12 are typically at Brennan. And then our pre-K to four, we run that at Thatcher. But due to the facility upgrades at Thatcher this year with the air conditioning, we actually ran it at Studly. However, Studly was also having facility upgrades, so we ended up having to start a week later and end a week later. And we notified families in early winter as soon as we found out to make that as easy as possible. We were pretty nervous, our staff, our students, and our families were nervous, particularly with our youngest students with that change. I have to say, it went very smoothly. I want to thank the staff, students, and families, Teresa Silver, ESY coordinator, for working through that with us. Thank you. For working through that with us, particularly facilities, always transportation, OIT, but particularly facilities this year, who really helped us move lots of equipment and materials over from Thatcher to Studly and back because of student needs. I want to thank Lisa Boyle and her team over at Studly. They were fantastic, they hosted us. We'd love to come back. It was great to have, to run the whole program right next door to each other. It was so much smoother for, particularly for our speech folks, our PTs, our OTs, our BCBAs who go between the two sites. It ran much smoother. As far as programming, like our enrollment and the rest of the state, we continue to see an increase in special education numbers. We continue to be below the state, however, our numbers continue to increase each year. We see the largest increase at preschool. That's been fairly consistent for the last few years. We've opened up a classroom there in the spring. We did again this past spring. We've had, upon review, continued that classroom into the fall. We're all, we also continue to see a need for additional social-emotional therapeutic supports at the high school. We added a teacher and a paraprofessional there this year for a third teacher, third paraprofessional for that program at the high school. And then in our transition program, our 12-plus, 18- to 21-year-olds, we have a bubble for the next couple of years of students and had to add a teacher to that program. So we have three teachers for the 12-plus program. With all of that said, we actually had to close a program at Brennan due to low enrollment, and that's our ALP program at Brennan. We had very small numbers. We don't see numbers coming up in the next few years for that program. We were able to accommodate, meet with those families, those students, and accommodate those students, that small number of students within programming that we already had at Brennan. So we did that. Programs that we are watching this year because of high enrollment numbers, that would be our K to eight, social-emotional SSC program at Studly and Coelho, our K to eight Insights Intensive Autism Program at Brennan and Thatcher, at Thatcher, our Project Success program. And then at ACA, our inclusion numbers there are also high. Like Joanne mentioned, enrollment, our new registration with students with IEPs, that has been fairly, it's about what it was last year at this time, slightly down from two years ago. However, continues to be much larger than it was prior to COVID. That's been pretty consistent for us. What we're seeing, last year, we saw high numbers at the high school and ELC. This year, we're seeing smaller numbers there for move-ins, high numbers for K to eight. So kind of a wash there. For out of district, it's been pretty much the same as it was last year. We did see some move-ins in the spring. We were able to accommodate five students from out of district. We were able to accommodate them this year in our programming here in the district. So we were able to bring them back in. As far as students that we're seeing on the, in moving into Attleboro, the same disabilities that we've been seeing for the last few years, autism, social-emotional behavior, therapeutic, and attention and focusing, executive functioning. Those are kind of what we're seeing across the board. Like Julianne said, we're for the first time in the last few years in special education for teacher position and provider position, direct services to kids, we're fully staffed. But for paraprofessionals, that continues to be a challenge for us, less than last year. So we continue to use contracted vendors, but at a smaller rate than we did last year. So the high school has done, you know, they've done, Kate and her team, a super job in their hiring. The ELC is fully staffed, but we continue to see a struggle in staffing, particularly our intensive autism program, our Insights program. And that's been fairly consistent for the last few years. And then back in March of 2023, the state notified districts that we had to roll out a new IEP as of this year. We've gone ahead and done that. We've spent lots of training and orientation over the last couple of years in preparation for that. Our teams, over the summer, we had teams meeting across grade levels in schools. We had about 50 staff doing some work over the summer, just kind of digging in a little bit more into the IEP and the new IEP. We also had, ran three sessions in our IEP platform through Aspen. We had about 90 staff participating in that in June and August. We also this year have identified special ed teacher leads across our schools to better support day-to-day, in-the-moment, and our special ed staff with the implementation of the IEP. For families who are wondering when they will see the new IEP, we didn't start it on day one. It's when your child is due to have, when their IEP ends at your next meeting this year, you will then be, that's when we will be using the new IEP. So if your student IEP ends in December, in December, your case manager will be reaching out to you, and that's when you would be going through that new IEP. So that's how we're doing it. So this year's kind of a year in flux for us. So we have students in the old IEP and students in the new IEP as their cycle comes up. For families who are interested in learning about the new IEP prior to that meeting, we are actually facilitating a two-part training next week. It's next Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:30 here in this room. It's in-person. Angela Ferrera is running that meeting, and families can sign up for that. We've sent out flyers, it's on our website. Families, she'll be going through basic rights, but through the new IEP as well to get families becoming familiar with it. We're also hoping to do a virtual later on in the year as well for families, as well as a session with our ELL Parent Advisory Council as well. Or families who are, so when I first came to Attleboro, we had a very strong, what they call ACE PAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And while that's kind of still there, they do still run some sessions, they're present on social media. One of the things that they've struggled with is board members. They're, many of the students of families who were board members, they've kind of graduated, they're older, they've moved on. So they are absolutely looking for board members. We held a session, an orientation, kind of interest session in August, to see if families were interested in that. So if there's any family out there who's interested in participating in the ACE PAC, becoming a board member, please reach out to myself, Allison Washington, or Angela Ferrera, and we can certainly connect you and get you up and running. If you have questions for me.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Domenici?
Thank you. And I probably ask this every year because a few years now, we had that, kind of the last-minute drop-in from the state in late August, September, where we had, what was it, like bill eight or nine? Families where it kind of really caused some, some challenges to us financially, and of course, with displacement. of course, with just placement. I'm guessing by your update, if I didn't hear it, no news is good news, and we're not, are we out of the woods? Is there, are we still in kind of a window where that could happen?
So the, well, kids come every day. We had lots of them today. So we had, for this school year, we had one student move in with an out-of-district placement. Last school year in the spring, we had three students move in, kind of last minute moved in. Of those three students, two are now back in district, and an additional three that we had that were already Attleboro students that we also brought in from out of districts. That's kind of where we're standing with that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Fertado.
Good evening. Here to report on the operational aspects of the school district, both over the summer at the start of the school year. You know, in my time here, Mr. Geddes, Mr. Lawson, recall when I came, came back from my short hiatus, we were having community meetings about transportation. I think that this, this has been one of the best summers here in my career. A lot got done, a lot got improved. We, we, just under the $10 million mark with train and upgrading our facilities from a cooling and heating perspective. We've done a bunch of floors and rehab work throughout the district, but especially started at Brennan. I think I have warned the committee that next summer Brennan will be shut down for just a real comprehensive addressing of the school's infrastructure needs, and those programs be moving to Wamsutta for the summer. As the committee does know, the extensive air conditioning work we've done over the summer, Studley, Thatcher, Willett are all complete, all functioning, and so far, no Our focus at the moment is, is closing out the high school project, which is scheduled theoretically to get signed off on in the next month, and, you know, there's a reason for that in terms of the process with the M S B A and, and getting all of that financial accounting done, but we're very comfortable where things are right now, and a couple of kind of annoying issues in the project, including the front lights and, and the kind of feels that you hit first as you're coming toward the campus. But other than that, it's, it's in very good shape to get done on schedule. Plan for the year is to continue to kind of jump the hoops in the regulatory process for getting a series of parking lots redone, Hyman Fine, Studley, and Thatcher. And then, again, as the committee knows, we're going to commence work on security cameras next week. From a facilities perspective, again, an extraordinary amount of work. We, we don't typically accomplish this much, much in the summer. The reason for that is all the work train was doing, kind of relieved us of, you know, the heating changeovers and all of that stuff, freed us up to do, to do additional work. Food service lunches have gone much better than they did last year despite the increased enrollment. We've been able to meet the challenges day-to-day at the start of the school year. The high school has been much more productive than it was on our first school year start, which was, you know, a big challenge. One little wrench in the whole operation had been the Boar's Head recall. The whole foundation of our lunch meat and food service, and Woodson's Food Service, is Boar's Head. So there was a, there was a kind of massive dance that had to take place right before school started, and there were days where deli sandwiches were not available because of that changeover. But other than that, it's been remarkably smooth and uneventful. We, you know, we still, as we will have forever, have the start-of-the-year jitters with freshmen and first-year students trying to figure out how this all works. You know, that leads to some slowing down of processes, but nothing like what we went through in the first, first opening. For this year, they are going to be revamping the middle school service lines to provide a more efficient layout for our middle schools, and we're going to be upgrading equipment at Coelho and Studley during the year. Transportation has been, has been a challenge as the superintendent started his discussion with, we have extremely heavy bus ridership. As the committee knows, we don't, we don't leave kids at a bus stop, so we have all students jumping on buses, whether they're eligible to or not. We're now working through the actual bus lists to identify the students on the bus who either either need to register or are not eligible. That's going to be another kind of two-week process. However, anybody who had applied late has been assigned a bus at this point regarding late applications. We had nearly 1,000 people apply after July 25th, which was the printed deadline for As the superintendent pointed out, that, that number's grown annually and is getting to, certainly getting to a tipping point to be able to get things sorted out prior to the end of September. It's, it's, it's quite a process and quite labor-intensive and frustrating for both sides. We have parents calling up saying, "Well, I'm a single parent. I have to get to work," you know. Let's see. But, you know, there's, you know, 400 applications ahead of yours. I'm sorry. You know, it's, it's a, it's a very, very frustrating circumstance, and that, those thousand applications are pretty evenly split between us eligible students and students seeking a seat through fee-for-service, the fee-for-service process. This year, for the first time ever, we had, actually had to put a hold on the fee-for-service process about two weeks ago, just to make sure we had enough seats for the students who are bus-eligible. It turned out we did, so we're kind of digested the whole thing, but we have a series of buses that are technically full. Again, it's hard to tell because of the number of students who are riding them, and, and for the first time in my memory is, we've got some high school buses that are full. So four or five, which is pretty, pretty extraordinary. You know, if the enrollment trends continue, the committee may be needing to think about adding a bus if, if things, well, you know, again, we have another two weeks to sort things out, see where we actually stand, but I, I know the numbers are quite high. Plan for the year, we, we're giving serious consideration to replacing the, the current cameras on the buses, which we are responsible for as a district, not Bloom. Those cameras are eight years old. They're hardware-based, so they have basically DVD recorders on the, on the buses themselves, and if you want to review video, you have to get the recorder off the bus, take out its memory card, and play the, play the video. Very, you know, 2012-ish of us, but we're, we're looking to potentially go to a cloud-based system real-time and just upgrade that, that entire situation. And we're also going to be continuing our elementary school program with the YMCA on swim lessons during the school year, during the day. We're grateful we're able to do that, given the usage of the system at this point. Then finally, O I T, we, we completed our move to one-to-one devices district-wide, adding K and one to that equation. We've got a couple of important goals for the year. One is to upgrade, start the upgrade process for switches throughout our buildings. Some of those pieces of equipment are 20 years old. We're, we're going to get into a, sort of a cycle annually to, you know, take a chunk out each year until we've gotten to where we need to be. We're also, for those who are here, going to start replenishing and upgrading the access points in our buildings. That's, it's that time, after all the work we did to get them in in the first place. And finally, we are looking to do a sort of split shift hire. We've, we've had enough experience now in the new building to understand that the equipment in the auditorium is very sensitive, very technical, and to have any expectation that either a user's going to figure that out, or we're going to be able to gear up enough students to kind of march through that for use of buildings after hours by outside groups. We felt it was a little too much of a risk profile, so we're going to do a, a split shift technology person who would have to support events in the auditorium and with all of that equipment during the, during the school year. That theoretically, we're opening the doors as of January 1st, so.
Again, that was a lot, so, Mr. Fertado.
Sure. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. The camera replacement you're talking about on the buses, correct?
Yes.
So more just concern, so we rent the bus or we lease the buses from our transportation company, are we the ones responsible for these cameras? Are they Attleboro property, or do we fund it through a lease for the bus company?
No, we're, we're responsible, and they are Attleboro property.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So two things. First, definitely wanted to thank Mr. Fertado and your team and the YMCA for being such a great community partner. I know that's a lot of coordination to do. This is such an important life-saving skill, so I'm very excited to see that effort being put there. I have a question about transportation, about some numbers. If you don't have these immediate, the numbers immediately available, that's, that's fine. But we know we have about 6,000 students, give or take. How many, how many are, generally speaking, bus-eligible versus fee-for-service? And how many, how many seats do we have available right now that we're considering, that we may need to add another bus?
Yeah. So again, the, the variability in that is significant because as enrollment, in any given year, historically anyway, enrollment would bounce up and down by 100. And again, as it bounced up, there were 100 fewer seats for fee-for-service. As it bounced down, there were 100 more seats available for fee-for-service. What we ran into this year is about, at this point, about 300 more students between the two groups on the buses than has been the case historically. So a lot of concern. And again, we have not sorted through all of that yet, but, you know, that would, that would suggest about 300 seats fewer available for fee-for-service people. That number, fee-for-service is typically around 1,400 to 1,600 a year. I would probably peg the bus-eligible at somewhere around 3,000. We're transporting about 4,500 students a day, but this shit's about 47, something like that.
Do we have any students that, that are still waiting for a seat on the bus? Or is that part of the whole two-week kind of scrub?
Yeah, so, no. At this point, we know who is supposed to be on the bus.
Okay.
What we don't know is who the other students are on the bus, and we have to get those reported into the schools so the schools can work with those families. And if it's a matter of registering for the bus to get them to do that, or oftentimes, you know, to be with friends, et cetera, students who are not eligible take the bus, jump on at their friend's bus stop and enjoy the ride.
Fair enough, fair enough. All right. Thank you. And, and I assume that, you know, once that's all vetted out at a future meeting, we'll be going over those numbers as well?
Yeah, we have deadlines, so this, this won't go beyond October 1st. We will, we will both know who's supposed to be on the bus and have, have filtered out those who don't belong on the bus by then.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Domenici?
Thank you. First, I want to commend you and the, and the team because I know that when we were talking about finishing up some of the air conditioning projects, we were looking at the end of September, and we got that done earlier than expected, so that's amazing news, and I concur, a ton of work done this year. My questions, I, I just have a couple of quick ones. The first one being, since we, you know, we're not regularly meeting as an official school building committee any longer, is one of the punchless items, the National Grid approval of our usage of our canopy tops?
Great question. So what ultimately happened, and again, I, it's extraordinary, the process we went through to get there, is that National Grid finally succumbed to the fact that they are, they have put us in a, in a, in an area of the state of Massachusetts that's being studied for the impact of solar on the, on the local power supply. So we, we are just finishing the paperwork required to say, you know, our system will do this, it'll impact this way, and grid then has to digest that. You know, your guess is as good as mine, and then, once that's digested, it, they will make a determination as to when we can flip the switch. But that, I believe the city today, maybe even literally, paid the, paid the application fee for that, that study.
Yeah, just to make sure that that wasn't like one final holdup on finishing the project, so to speak.
Everybody has their finger on the button, just waiting to push, and, and grid just, you know.
Yeah. So that was one. And then the other, just, I know that last year, we had our Advocates Administration over on Rick's Corner. Is that, is that done, or is that still in place? Because I've had questions about people asking about when are these buildings, you know, going to be fully turned over to the city?
Yeah. So again, the, the old high school has.
And Finberg has, too. So it's, this is the last one.
This is the last one. The city still has no, hasn't had anybody express interest and hasn't had the time to, you know, put it on the market, given the activity. There's been a lot of starts and stops with the other two buildings, so they've been kind enough to allow us to, to keep using the, the building for this year. And, you know, we're sort of looking at it year by year and see where the city is in terms of their process in getting the, the buildings settled, and, and we are actively looking for an answer to that question, you know, where does, where does Advocates live? But in the meantime, they've been making a Rick's Corner available.
Thank you.
And the, the, we've, we've extended that deadline with the state based on the agreement with the M S B A, correct?
So the, the requirement is part of the bond language. It's not, it has nothing to do with the M S B A. So, and the city, the city is committed to taking any net revenue from the sale of the buildings and putting it against the bond obligation, so. There's, but there's no timeline associated with any of that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of a follow-up to Mr. Domenici's question. So regarding the whole punch list and closing out of the project, just to verify, if there's any open items on that punch list, we don't close the project. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's a final sign-off at the end of October, assuming that there's no punchless items to be addressed.
Those LEDs are going to be working out there, right? Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fertado? So the, the last question then, I know we had, we received a couple of bids on the overall facility and operational audit that we're looking to do for the entire district. The, is, is transportation part of that? And are we better off? And, because, thank you for confirming, so.
That's a great question. So I, I want to be clear, it's, it's, it's sort of a, a building assessment, you know, are you, are you using the buildings as efficiently as we can, tied with a look at redistricting the district? So that examination will absolutely impact transportation, and... So that examination will absolutely impact transportation, and the determination will be driven by transportation. You know, one of the, one of the known big cost drivers in poor distribution of districts is transportation. So that, that'll really impact how, how they draw those lines as efficiently as possible.
And the, the reason I ask is, I was, I was joking with someone the other day that I was at a bus stop and watched other buses going to the same school go by our bus stop before our bus came. And I know that's one of the, we've talked about all the webs that have been tangled over the past few decades since we redistricted during the first Bush administration. And, and that's one of those things with redistricting that we haven't had a chance to untangle just because we haven't been able to have a staff member to do it. So I, I guess before we look at adding buses to the current contract, should we wait for that assessment or?
Yes, the answer is yes. Or we should have a, a good sense of the impact on transportation that redistricting may bring before making any decision on a new bus. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
I appreciate the brevity. All right. So thank you very much to the entire administration. I think between this meeting and our, our senior celebration at the end of the year, those are the two meetings when we really appreciate how much work, every meeting, we recognize how much work is happening in this district, but, but seeing it in this large of a scale at the start of every year and seeing the impact in almost as large of a scale at the end of the year is, helps put a lot of things into perspective for the district. So thank you all very much for everything you're doing and for your reports tonight. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from both our August 12th, 2024, and August 19th, 2024 meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It has been a while since we've met, so we do have a very lengthy consent agenda. So we'll start with a motion to accept the donation of a digital camera Canon EOS Rebel T7-1500D telephoto zoom lens EF75-330, 4 to 5.63, and camera bag with an overall estimated value of $450 from Ashley Bonin to the CTE Department for Educational Purposes. Motion to accept a donation of, of one Lear 12 cubic foot medium temp walk-in cooler in an estimated value of $16,600, and miscellaneous PSC motors and small HP compressors with an estimated value of $3,400 to the CTE Department at the high school. Motion to accept a 2014 Ford EcoVan E35SUP with an estimated value of $8,000 from the Sheriff's Department to the CTE program at the high school. Motion to accept a 2011 Ford Krovik Polent sedan with an estimated value of $6,500 from the Sheriff's Department to the CTE program at the high school. Motion to accept a contractual obligation in the amount of $39.60 from Bay State Textiles to Hill Roberts Elementary School. Motion to accept a contractual obligation in the amount of $29.10 from Bay State Tile, Bay State Textiles to Hill Roberts Elementary School. Motion to accept the contractual obligation in the amount of $116.75 from Planet Aid as broken down in the check receipt dated August 16th, 2024. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $300 from Weststat to be deposited in the Thatcher Gifts Donation Line for Educational Needs. Motion to accept a donation of a $100 gift card from Cardi Furniture to Thatcher Elementary School to be used for the students' educational needs. Motion to accept a donation of sensory-based tools with an estimated value of $381.29 from Donors Choose to the Special Education Classroom of Erica Money at Thatcher Elementary School. Motion to accept the donation of flexible seating items with an estimated value of $1,148 from Donors Choose for the classroom of Gabrielle Atkinson at Thatcher Elementary School. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Studley PTO to the educational needs of students. Motion to accept 60 backpacks with 45-piece supply kits in each, an estimated value of $1,187.03 from Sedexo. It says at school, do we have a specific school? Or is that?
That's the organization.
Oh, Sedexo at school. I apologize. Motion to accept a donation of backpacks and school supplies with an estimated value of $1,300 from the Olivia Knighton Foundation. Motion to accept a donation of backpacks and school supplies with an estimated value of $593 from the Greek Orthodox Church.
Move.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Bennett?
Um, thank you. On item number two, it doesn't say who it's from. Is that something that we need to worry about?
We do not have an item. Do we know who the donor was for the? I don't think it's necessary for us to approve the receipt of the donation.
We can find, we can find out.
Yeah. And it's always helpful to, to recognize those that are donating. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Demenchie?
Just to acknowledge that this was about $46,000 worth of donations, and, and we appreciate every time we get consent items, but that, that just seemed like an extraordinary amount. Thank you.
Absolutely. A great way to start the year.
Ms. Johnson?
So definitely want to thank all those who made contributions for the Donors Choose items, I believe were number 10 and number 12. I just want to verify that, I'm sorry, and number 11, that those went through the policy process, that they were vetted. Because I know some, these, I know that's more important when it is something that's more technical, but these went, did these go through the elementary schools or not? Were they put in elementary schools? Just through the school buildings as, as appropriate?
The principal approved.
The principal approved. Okay, perfect, perfect.
Or they were.
Or came up. Perfect. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have our sub, our subcommittee reports. First, we have a lengthy Subcommittee Meeting Report from Policy and Personnel for our, their August 19th and September 9th meetings, and for those, I will turn it over to Mr. Stores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so we have two meetings worth of policies that we've been working on. The administration has been extremely busy, so normally we don't have this much. I'm going to try my best to get through it as quickly, you know, or as efficiently as possible. So the first group of policies, I'll reread in a moment, it's no changes recommended. We're looking just to note the review date, so this all came out unanimous from our subcommittees meetings as follows. Policy DFTA Golden Age Pass, IJNDD, Policy on Social Media, IC/ICA, School Year/School Calendar, ID, School Day, IHBEA, English Learner Education, IKB, Homework Policy, IKE, Promotion and Retention of Students, IMD, School Ceremonies and Observations, KA, School/Community Relations Goals, KCD, Public Gifts to Schools, KDB, Public's Right to Know, KHB, Advertising in School, KLG, Relations with Law Enforcement Authorities, LA, Education Agency Relations Goals, LB, Relations with Other School and School Districts, and LDA, Student Teaching and Internships. Again, no changes, just noting the review date on these. Does anybody want me to bring to handle any one of those separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. For the next section, this is a motion to edit the following policies to align with Attleboro's protocols and procedures. So some differences, if MASK has a policy, ours does not necessarily follow MASK word for word. We do our best to keep it as much aligned with MASK as we can, so a lot of our policies have some of the wording from MASK and then some of our own wording. There is, before we go through the, through them, there is a question on one of them. Policy DBJ, Budget Transfer and Authority. If some, you know, if you could please ask the question that you, whatever you want.
Sorry to do this to you, Mark. But in, in the policy meeting, I had wanted that changed to something more descriptive than a doubt, accounts where the first two numbers match can be transferred. It's just that I don't, that doesn't mean anything to anyone who doesn't know enough about the Attleboro Schools Accounting System to know exactly what that authority is. So if you could think about, and, and if you could think about phrasing that in a lang, in, in language that doesn't include, you know, reference to the numbers of the accounts, that way it's easier for us to understand, and for someone who doesn't know the ins and outs of school accounting, which I don't know.
To summarize real quick for, for everybody else, so what we're talking about is within that policy, there's a section that gives authority to the, the business office to transfer within the first two digits of a line item. I think our question when, during the meeting was more about, is there a way to like explain what the first digit and the second digit kind of means, and then put that wording into the policy?
Or if it could say accounts that are related in this semantic fashion using, you know, something so that people can read that and know exactly what it is.
Right. Just, but for the committee's benefit, our accounting system is based in the state's accounting system. It's uniform across all school districts in the, in the Commonwealth. So I will try to find clearer language and, and also provide you with some background information on what each space in the account number means. However, just be aware that that's a state process. It, it ties back to all of our state reporting and, you know, which is very grateful when I came 20 years ago that that's what was in place, because in a lot of places at that time, they weren't like that. So hats off to City Auditor who drove that process down into here, which was great. But yeah, I will, I will certainly do that for you.
Thank you. Yeah, in addition to being ignorant about city finances, I don't know the states either, so. Appreciate it.
And I just want to reiterate, we're not looking to change the, change the policy or change the practice. It's more about just how to refer to those two line items. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll do this section and I will leave DBJ out, ask it to come back with the, with the revised wording. Okay, so again, we have a motion to edit the following policies to align with Attleboro's protocols and procedures. Policy AC, Non-Discrimination and Harat, and Harassment. DKC, Expense Reimbursement. GCG-E1, Substitute Pay Rates. IHBAA, Observations of Special Education Program. IHBG, Homeschooling. IJOA, Field Trip Policy. IJOC, School Volunteers. IKB, Homework Policy, and IMG, Animals in School. Does anybody want me to take any of those separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great.
Okay. Next section, this was a motion, unanimous motion out of the committee to approve the edits to align with MASK.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stores?
Yep, please.
Did you want to go back to approve the?
The, we don't have the wording for the DBJ, so we're going to have it come back to Subcommittee and then bring it back up.
Okay, sorry. I thought you meant voting, I thought you meant you wanted to vote on it tonight separately. Sorry.
If we had the wording, we would have been able to, but I don't think we had, we're ready for that yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this next section is to approve the edits to our policies so that we could fully align with MASK's policies. That is a practice that we've been doing for many, many years wherever we can, so. Policy IGA/IGD, Curriculum Development and Adoption. IHAM, Health Education. IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs. IHB, Special Instructional Programs and Accommodations. IHBF, Homebound Instruction. IHBHE, Remote Learning. IJ, Instructional Materials. IJ-R1, Reconsideration of Instructional Resources. IJOC, School Volunteers. And KBA, School Parents/ Guardian Relations Goals. Does anybody want me to take any of those separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimous. Next one, or two, is a motion to adopt the following policies so that, again, we're going to align with MASK, IMG, Service Animals in Schools, and KDCB, District Website and Social Media. Does anybody want me to handle those separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next one is a motion to remove the following two policies as they are obsolete, MASK does not use these. IMG-E1, Guidelines for Animals in School Settings. IHAI, Occupational Education. Does anybody want those separate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will remove those. And the last one is, everybody should have received the most, sorry, the short-form Title IX Non-Discrimination Statement. This is a, a statement that goes with the law when it comes to non-discrimination requirements, and we utilize it in, in various areas, including the Student Handbook and some other, other documents as well. So we're looking to approve the wording that was provided by the administration for the short-form Title IX Non-Discrimination. Are there any questions regarding the short-form Title IX Non-Discrimination? Please.
So it's just a little bit different. I know with categories, the rest has changed, it's edits, whatever else. Was there something we had prior to this, or is this net new to the policy handbook?
Please.
It's required under the Title IX Regulations.
So it's not new to the handbook? Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great.
And that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stores. Well done, getting through that pretty, pretty quickly. Next on the agenda is an update from our Finance and Budget Subcommittee from their meeting on Wednesday, September 11th. For that, I will turn it over to Mr. Larson.
Thank you. Committee met September 11th and had a number of discussions, a lot that you've already heard from, so I won't reiterate a lot of it. There's a couple that I do want to highlight. One of the, the, the additional benefits of this brand-new building that we're, we're enjoying is the summer work at the other buildings, there was a lot of, a lot of things that, you know, people had always hoped to be able to have time to get to and the rest of it. And because they had been spending so much time on the last high school, there's a lot of things that didn't get, never had a chance to, to get high enough on the list. And Mr. Fratato talked about a number of the, the issues that already got done, but I think it's great for the community to know that another benefit of this building is allowing us to take better care of, of the other buildings that they've given us to use. So I just wanted to bring that up. We will have one motion coming forward about a prior year invoice. I'll get to that in a minute. We had a long discussion about the fee-for-service and transportation update as, as both the superintendent and Mr. Fratato had also talked about. I think people need to realize that, you know, 1,000 registrations in the course of about two and a half months, two months, to be handled by two people. I mean, unless, you know, one Superman and one, you know, I mean, it just, they did an amazing job to be where we are now. We did start a discussion at the committee meeting about trying to come up with some other ideas as to, you know, how do we start this process at the end of the year before we even send everybody home? And, you know, is there, is there something that we can put in place to start jogging everybody's memory before the, you know, the 30th of August, when everybody starts to think about these things? So we're going to continue to have conversations about that. Along with that, we had an update from the ONI Council about the redistricting project. There were six proposals that came in, and the council, the ONI Council is in the process of going through those. They're hoping to, we'll look down to two, that they will again come in and review and interview with the recommendation of sending it to us. Again, the, the big benefits of this is, is really twofold. A, to optimize the, the use of the buildings that we have that we get to use, and then also to optimize people being closest to the schools that, that's where their neighborhoods are. You know, it doesn't make sense to, just because it's the only place we have a seat, to take somebody who should be at Hyman Fine and send them to Hill Roberts, or vice versa. So there's additional cost to that. There's just, the children are on the buses. There's just, the children are on the buses a lot longer than they really should be. And, you know, as it's been said a number of times, we haven't done this in 25 some odd years, you know. So, I mean, there's a lot of inefficiencies that we're living with right now that we're hoping to be able to address. Now, having said all that, yes, there will be some families, and I'll stick my nose out first and say, there's going to be some families that are all of a sudden going to be changing schools. We don't think it's going to be a lot of people, but, you know, something is going to change. So, if somebody needs somebody to call and yell at, you know, my number is on the website, so they can call me. But I think the greater good will certainly be there for going through this process. We're starting, they're just about done closing up the FY24 budget. As we've been talking about all this past year, we've been using up a lot of grant funding because of the timing. The grant would go away if we didn't use it. There's a lot of ESER funds and some other funds that we were asked by City Hall to use up because, I mean, it makes perfect sense to do it. That being said, our budget surplus is roughly twice as big as it normally would be, and a lot of that is because of that grant usage. And so, there's some savings that will be brought forward to this year, and then there'll also be some free cash carry forward for the city to decide what it's going to do. We are in conversations with them about some things that we'd like to see them let us do with that money. And as those conversations progress and as things are certified, we'll be able to come back to the committee and the community with more information about that. That having all been said, there is one motion to be brought forward. This will be the first of many over the course of the years, but we'd like to entertain a motion to send to the Municipal Council for approval, a prior year invoice in the amount of $1,073 and no sense.
So, moved.
Second.
I know you all had information sent to you in your packet about this. If anyone has any questions, otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Chairman, that's the extent of my report.
A bit of a follow-up related to the surplus. I know we were, I guess the general question is, what will the ask of the city be? I know in the past, we've looked at either some capital improvements or putting it towards operational costs and difficult budget years like this one, so is there?
Yeah, well, part of it is going to be for our budget because we, instead of using grant, you know, we, instead of using our budget last year, we used grant funding instead. So, part of it, obviously, be going to the budget, and then there's another significant almost half that, once free cash and everything has been certified in the fall, there'll be a conversation to be had about what can happen with that. I mean, be perfectly honest, all the money is the city's.
Absolutely.
You know, so, I mean, it's really up to them, and, you know, they've been very open in the conversations with the school about this in the past, and we don't have any reason to expect that that wouldn't happen again, but, you know, it's not, no longer our money. Attleboro's money, and we'll wait for the city to decide what to do with it.
Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is open forum. Anyone that would like to address the committee is welcome to come up to the podium. Please use your, please provide us with your name and address for the record. Members of the public are welcome to address the committee as part of open forum. Please know that the committee cannot engage in discussion about any concerns that are raised or proposals brought forward, but we will look into the information you provide and will respond to you as needed.
Hi, great. Hi, everybody. My name's Taylor Hall. I live at 26 Bird Street here in Attleboro. Thank you for welcoming this public comment. I'm a community member, as I mentioned. I have kids in our public school system, and I'm a public school teacher at the School of Social Work at Bridgewater State University. You may remember my attendance back in the spring. I asked the committee to pass a resolution in support of higher ed for all, and I'm happy to report that we now have free community college in the Commonwealth, which is a major win from my perspective as an educator. So, I'm here today to ask you to pass a resolution in support of the Yes on Two ballot initiative, joining communities like East Hampton, Greenfield, Northampton, Lawrence, and Worcester, who have already passed resolutions in support of this shift. As you may know, Question Two on the Massachusetts ballot in November maintains high educational standards and reduces the crushing stress placed on students by high-stakes testing because a student's ability to graduate shouldn't depend solely on a one-size-fits-all standardized test if their teachers, grades, and coursework all prove that they're ready for future success. In the opinion of our community of educators, parents, and students who have lived through the standardized test regime, we feel the MCAS graduation requirement gives too much power to a standardized test that can't fully measure whether a student has learned what they need to succeed in our community. And by keeping this requirement in place, we're telling students that even if they are passing all of their courses, if they cannot pass this exam, they cannot get that high school diploma that is the first step in many careers, including the trades, which the students coming out of Attleboro High School are especially equipped for. In Attleboro, I feel confident we have already recognized the need to assess students in many ways as we are part of MCIEA, the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment, giving us the ability to highlight our students' strengths and talents that do not always show up in the result of a high-stakes standardized exam. Accountability in education is imperative, but we need to be accountable for all learners. So, these high-stakes testing situations create significant stress for students, as we know, and they do stack the deck against students of color, English-language learners, and those with learning disabilities. This emphasis on a single test undermines our high education standards, and it forces teachers to teach test-taking skills instead of things like critical thinking and individualized learning. So, Question Two does not eliminate the MCAS. It just makes the MCAS score one of many data points that can be used to assess a student's likelihood of success. Therefore, I'm asking the Attleboro School Committee to pass a resolution to support the Yes on Two ballot initiative, removing the graduation requirement tied to the MCAS exam. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thanks.
Ms. Hall did send potential resolution language to me, and we will consider that at our October 7 meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Great to see you.
Is anyone else here, would anyone else here like to address the committee as part of public forum? Seeing none, I will close public forum. As far as upcoming meetings, our Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting will meet here in the Zito Conference Room on October 1st. Our Finance and Budget Committee Meeting, Subcommittee Meeting, will be October 2nd here in the Zito Conference Room. And our next full committee meeting will be on Monday, October 7. Does anybody have any new business or anything else they'd like to bring to the committee, Mr. Domenici?
Yeah, just really quickly because of the timing of it. This Friday night, Attleboro High School plays Bishop Fien at home in Attleboro, and I'm bringing this up because a member of our community, Mr. Art Bombardier, who owns Tex Barry's Coney Island Dog, will once again be volunteering his services in the concession stand, all proceeds to support the Varsity Booster Club. He doesn't take a dime. He does this every year, and, I mean, our football games are pretty well-attended. The band has increased, the cheerleading squad is great, but Art coming in every year, it's a great thing. I just wanted to give some support and attention to that and thank him for constantly doing that. And then, I don't know, some of you may have seen in the paper recently, a couple of local kids have been playing music around town, and one of them happens to be one of our own, Ian Betts, who is one of the drummers in the Attleboro Marching Band, Jazz Band, Concert Band, et cetera. And it has been noted that Monday night, the 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Ian and his friend from Cumberland will be playing at the Colonel Blackington Inn. So, if anybody is interested in hearing them, it's a pretty good jazz on, two-piece band that they do. I just wanted to give him a shout-out because it's kind of a cool thing. People just seem to be uplifted when they are coming off trains and walking around town and hearing music. They just decided to do it on their own, and it's cool that the Colonel Blackington Inn has decided to give them a place to do it.
Anything else? One last thing I will give an opportunity to, and I should have done it earlier. Ms. Ferguson, congratulations again on your experience in Paris.
Thank you.
Is there anything you would like to share with the committee about your experience over the summer in the Olympics?
I think the biggest thing is just a thank you from the whole Attleboro community for their support because I don't think I'd be where I am today without it. And it has led me to accomplish so much and just made me strive to do better.
Excellent. So, we'll see you back here in four years with a medal, hopefully?
Hopefully. That's the goal.
Excellent. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.